Right, I'll start right all that.
Jacob's in with my daughter.
Yes, she is.
So, he's a sophomore.
Mm-hmm. Naturalized.
Yes.
That's hard to believe.
Yes.
Funny feeling all of a sudden.
Oh, yes.
Not granted, they don't get this great. Only thing I don't have, like patience, but they're all around. My life and love them, but, and I do kid stuff which is normal.
Yes.
Jan watches them all every day. She goes up four thirty in the morning, goes out, take those jokes, get their fours.
Okay.
And taking them kids to school. Then she comes home with Elizabeth books today. She works at Sheffield. And, uh, he works up to, uh, printing place on one forty-two, can't think the last four hundred. Must bring that later after that morning. Every, oh, I can't wait anywhere he works there.
Yeah.
It's like, that's when the time shall go by, so she intends to help all four kids one day. Like West Jefferson's off this week. At least y'all get along. Getting Jan's head over her back, it's, uh, specialist Monday.
I'm here.
If she saw Monday, and she's gonna run to hospital. Hopefully, it was gonna be two, a week from Tuesday. But then that's when I have my holiday things, you have to get it to next Monday. This is her and me, I say that every week this year. She's starting to get old.
That's a lot.
Take care of yourself. I was okay if I laid my lips. These United Things just started. And I saw a doctor. Starting at forty, I got checked up every year, so I know what's happening.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
That's been thirty-six years ago. So strange, and now for Doctor Hayes, still alive.
Oh, yes.
He was good, but he, he was good, but he was, oh, he didn't even hire.
Yeah.
His nurses were so nice.
I used to brush him with him, was when I saw him.
To pass any of those things tonight?
We should.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you.
Better than last time.
No, but when I woke up and listened, or turned on the news, and I see that house up in Plumwood.
I heard it, it just collapsed.
No, it collapsed, but tore the roof off the front. Pushed the windows into the house, and then tore the roof off the front of it. This, you know, this was seven thirty, and I'm watching that, and by eight fifteen, I mean, they had two guys up there. They'd already put decking down, right? And by eight fifteen, they had the whole front of the house torn. I need to know who those people are. They were right on it.
I don't know for sure.
I've just seen it.
Wow, yeah, that was really super fast.
Oh, yeah.
There it is.
He called yesterday, put the cleaning, but I heard from the sense.
Call the meeting to order, if everyone please stand for the pledge, and then, moment of silent reflection, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilman Hitt? Councilwoman Traynor?
Present.
Councilwoman Stahl?
Present.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Here.
President Peters?
Here.
At this time, I would move to enter into executive session to consider confidential information that is directly related to a request for economic development administered under O R C Chapter fifty-nine, fifty-seven oh nine forty-three.
Second.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Who would you like to, to come in the meeting with us?
Um, I would like to invite our two councils. That I saw come in. Is that all I can do here? Anybody else? Oh, yes, yes, three councils.
I have, I know.
Yes.
I'm like, I'm like, take credit for it, that's pretty funny. Well, I was gonna turn my foot up, and I was like, oh, there's woods. Where's these white things? See? I'll take credit for it. I wish it would. See? I was like, oh, what are those? They would've been there for weeks.
I'm allergic to the lights.
I don't care about that one.
Was it down on the ground?
Yeah.
And the shady? You could like, rest her in the gas station.
Glad you could join us.
I can either buy a regular or watch or anything?
What's that? I don't, actually. I was counting on the executive session.
Well, I just, uh, I wish I would've thought of that, because I wish it was a seven.
I was meeting with other favorite butcher block, and he showed up twenty minutes late, and I said, I gotta go at six twenty-five. And then he was wanting to tell me why you couldn't do the best, Attorney General. And he's a good guy, I know. Matt, you missed an exciting Fairmore meeting last night. I'm disappointed you weren't there to take notes for us.
Oh, I'm sure it's thrilling.
It was the longest one of my six-year term, or six-year career.
How many, how long was it?
Well, just under two hours, but I tried to keep them right to one hour, one hour and five minutes.
That's a good timeframe.
Are they just leveling all that out just to make more parking?
Mark, yeah, right, we gotta get in there and get it seeded so that it, like, kind of converts, but it, like, it, it really does open. I mean, I think it'll double.
I haven't, I, I was gonna pull back there today, you know, I drove down Parkville a little time, and I saw what they were doing, and it looks pretty good.
What's really cool is that the county blocked these, um, T P S units for their dozers. None of their operators have used them before, so they were like, using that as their, get, get, get the feel of it, get it, so it worked out brilliant for us, right? Because technically, the county engineer's responsible for the fairgrounds. And they had a big sandbox to play in, and they were doing us a favor, but they were getting some good out of it. But it's crazy how much space that made up, right? Like, oh, that opened up a ton. And parking has been, I mean, fortunately, we've been growing attendance nicely.
Will that be all for our reason?
No, that's gonna be just, like, we have been trying to move all the traffic onto Garfield, um, and, yes, I, I, I thought that was a nice way to keep it off of Elm and, you know, and, and fifty-six, and no one really needs to use Garfield other than for the fairgrounds. But no, it's, it's, it, it's been really good, and, and honestly, I think this will allow us to open it up so the cars can get off of Garfield, so they're not sitting there waiting to come through, right?
Well, it'd be nice for all the events and stuff, like, especially like, the derby and stuff, like, a lot of people park.
Well, you know what? It's only, you know, I mean, I wish we had more traffic, right? I wish the traffic was a bigger problem, but it's only during a few, yeah, thirty, sixty-minute windows that it gets bottled up, and, if you're sitting there for that thirty or sixty-minute window, you're, you know, I don't,
I'd be three o'clock on one forty-two, right?
Yeah.
Forty-two busy for about thirty minutes.
Right. I remember when I opened butcher block, and, what's that guy's name? He doesn't even live in the city, and, um, yeah, I don't care. Yeah, I, I don't care, but he, he's, he, he's crazy, and he's an absolute nut, and it's like, he's like, oh, we gotta worry about traffic on fifty-six, and all this, this restaurant's gonna bring all this business, and, 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 we're, we're gonna have traffic on fifty-six, and I said, I said, he and I got two different concerns, I'm afraid there ain't gonna be enough traffic. You know, I don't think we're gonna have enough people at that restaurant, and he's worried about too many, so. Trying to think what he named, Joe? But he, he was, he got his certifier, like, right? My, well, first it was prosecutor, she had to, like, prosecute her for being completely nuts, like, costing policemen. Like, he was nuts. Yeah, yeah, yeah. She isn't, she was, but she's not. Yeah, she was supposed to be in our meeting last night, she wasn't there, and, and I don't know, so, she was feeling really sick when she got back from vacation, so she might be under the weather, because she was, she was really feeling sick when I talked to her. Yeah, I'll bet she is, I bet, I, I can tell. Yeah. But yeah, she was, but it's like, I'll bet that's what it is, because she was like, uh, like, two other crews, or, or, I don't know, you're running them, you know, people. She, she might have neither. I, I hate crews, but, like, I, like, I'm like, why do you wanna go on the most condensed? Be next to as many people as possible, you know?
He hates crews, and I've just been on, I just got off a cruise lot on Sunday.
You were, yeah, well, you were, yeah, you were with Tonya in that, weren't you? I hate crews, guys. They're like, oh, you really like this one, I'm like, yeah, I'm not. Never?
Neither of us.
You don't have to worry about traffic, you don't have to worry about this, that's what you do all day. You go like this, and if you get on land, and you're like, you feel like you're, your body's still going like this.
Not as, not as special.
You're nervous, long, like, there's nothing.
My husband Air Force.
You go in line, you're like, school, act, you're, you know, nothing. They change, because that's, that's their, that's their basement, so. I don't understand this. Plan this, to sell that. There's a lot of other stuff, but I would pass. Yeah. I'm here. That's fucking really nice. Twenty-seven, I think, or twenty-five. That's not, you know.
Coloring, you know, say this.
Okay.
Yeah, that's ice cream, actually, that's. They stopped pushing. I thought there'd be more people there.
Well, you got anybody out there with the blood, bring us some food?
I can. We want.
Thinking about going up there and short chairing all of them, getting up there and making over chairs. Going to limp off so when they come back down, they'll probably get behind you then. Where do they go?
Just into the. For like the many of you that are finance and stuff up.
Does it pass to that?
Yeah, yeah, through that door.
Is any teaching made their qualify?
I heard they try to get some new stuff on the menu on the street.
Yep, every three to six months we try to change it up. Well, Tuesdays have been there. They have free food, tasty. You get to say up to all.
Oh, takes you to the phone call hall.
Well, if you ever show up, they give you a little card saying, who tastes in here? You gotta show up to know where that's going. I wasn't waiting for it. Time to see.
That was feedback.
That's really good. All we do is look at the worst selling items, take them off the menu, keep the best selling one on the item. Menu and then the other people say, ah, why did you take, check who you talked about?
And that'd be fun.
Yeah. Easter, yeah, right, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, left, it starts at nine a.m. Slimes ten and twelve thirty. About nine a.m. Oh. It's a great job.
Yeah, wow, it's a good work.
It's funny, I have a group of Indians who have been open to hotels on Mondays. Super, super, super. Yeah. So now we're vegetarian, they raise their hands, like only one of them was. So I brought chef out and I said, hey, you know, let them something vegetarian. He brought out a beast and they like, thought it was the greatest thing. I mean, he made some amazing stuff. Snap of fingers.
He's done this. Being fed salads is vegetarian, but we, like, we thought it was very curious. Dog, we're gonna split that. Come on.
Chamberlain meeting. Vegetarian house and all that. Well, it's funny, I was, I was thinking the same thing, so I'm not vegetarian, obviously, but. Tuesday night, Pickwick County Republican Party, Lincoln made dinner. The lake was up there, he's the guest speaker, so they brought him a fruit bowl. Okay, couldn't you guys have like come up with something different? That might have been dessert or something, but you could have come up with something besides a fruit bowl and. He's, you know, you kind of pick him through it, I'm like.
They could have door after door.
Well, you know, he's a vegetarian, like you think.
You don't have his.
Yeah, it's like, come on.
Ooh, great, hi cauliflower. I gave this the roasted cauliflower this past week. And then we got roasted pastel and then I put onion noodles.
Now, when you do your roasted cauliflower, you put the whole head in the oven?
I cut it up small and then put it in the space and just a little bit of oil in the rest of the oven. And then I cook it in the air fryer because I like to really.
I cook cauliflower heads, like the whole thing, put like a buffalo sauce on them. Put it in the oven at four hundred or so. And it, it cooks it down nice and it's the best that like you could make a whole meal out of it. It's fantastic. Buffalo sauce on top of it, put it in, tip oil underneath, like there's nothing to it, it's amazing. And that's from, yeah, and that's from. Yeah, you can do that, or you could just trim it off like, you know, like you're saying, or other ones. Oh, oh, okay, we're still. Those two.
And then I, I, I can show this to you. Also, he run hard to stay out there.
So he has, so he can get in, it wasn't.
That's great, so. That's fine. It was perfect placement, too. I didn't know it was good to talk about that, abuse that word. He's the pizza whole problem. He is the whole problem. Like honestly, they're like, you got a brand new board of people that's all new to them. If you get a guy like that that's giving counsel and, you know what it made me think of? It's like, my civil engineer. Right, I'm like, they've got a guy like I had and if you get a bad consultant and it becomes. So later you figure out about changing. I was actually gonna break that up. Can we go on that side and see what's going on? The mural's bad?
No.
So February fifth, they said, she said, I'll touch base with you, she said. They'd be happy to be involved as long as it wasn't within the next six weeks. They had the big state competition. And that was February.
That's two months.
Yeah.
That's eight weeks.
Yeah.
Like, we want to start it, like a first process.
I didn't just work the moment, no one cares what you're doing at all.
Oh, I, I was gonna point him to be a big charter actor. Yeah, in addition to his major role.
I think that's a great idea.
He has mentioned it. I would have wanted to add something.
I'd like to make a motion to exit executive session.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Okay, on to minutes. Did everybody take a look at March 20th minutes? Any questions or concerns? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Public hearings, there are none this evening. No communications or announcements. Audience concerns? Did we get anybody tonight? Onto committee reports. Greg?
Well, finance meeting. We've not had a meeting since our last meeting. Our next meeting will be on April the 14th, 5:30, next door.
Brent?
Public service on the 8th, next door, 5:00, and public safety at 6:00.
Rich?
Public safety, as he mentioned, on the 8th at 6 o'clock.
Shannon?
Got nothing.
Nothing.
City official reports. Pat, you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Thanks to everyone for coming out. Here we go. So, I want to take a second and thank our executive assistant, Eve Breedlove, for everything that she's done for me, the city government, and our community. Eve came to us a couple of months ago and let us know that she will be moving out of state in July. We were obviously upset, but we would never hold anything against anyone who wants to leave and better their family and chase their dreams. So, Eve has done so much since she's been here. You know, we doubled the revenue, brought in for rentals under parks from rec, launched a new city website and app, organized numerous new events for the city, most notably the How Do You Steam COSI event with the London City Schools Pumpkin Palooza, which saw hundreds of attendees. We have the Hoppy Hour coming up. She digitalized all our city forums, making that easier for the residents. City calendar launched. And she really enhanced our social media presence with the successful Facebook presence, as well as the city website, where information really gets out and questions are answered and it makes it easier for the citizens to get the information they need. So, besides all that that she's done here, she's really came to London and became a presence in our city and has represented the city administration well at local events. She's done things with the Board of DD, like the cabaret events, and read to the school at Fairhaven, assisted with events with the Chamber, and she participated in their Leadership Academy classes, things at the Senior Center, Junior Achievement Wine and Women, Rotary, the schools. She actually joined Big Brothers and Big Sisters at the school and even talked me into having me and her do a Meals on Wheels route, which I guess is now mine. But that's just a portion of what she's done, and I can't thank her enough for everything that she's done for the city, but especially myself. She's made my job a lot easier. So, we wish her nothing but the best and good luck in the future endeavors, and just know that you'll truly be missed. So, this leads us to how are we going to move forward? Eva's opened our eyes to what really what really needs to be the executive assistant role, right? The social media presence and marketing that she's brought has just been phenomenal. So, we will be bringing the executive assistant job description to committee so we can change some of the stuff and add in the descriptions things about social media and marketing while cleaning up some of the other stuff that's in there. I don't want to say we hired her on false pretenses, but the job description really didn't say anything about social media or marketing or, you know, a lot of the things that she did for us. So, we just want to put that out there and make it clear of what we're actually looking for when we go for our next executive assistant. And then our plan is to get the job description through council and then we'd like to hire someone early so we can have a crossover between them and Eve so Eve can teach the new person kind of the ropes and how to do things and how our systems work and things of that nature. So, we'll have more of those discussions in committee. So, while I'm breaking bad news, I'll just move right on to the next piece of bad news. So, the Honeywell Building that housed Intelligrated, if you remember, there was about 300 employees there when Intelligrated was here. As you know, that building was purchased by an Italian company that was going to come in and bring a cable manufacturing operation. They went through a lot of local and state processes, like the Board of Zoning Appeals, and also went and got incentives from the state of Ohio. Governor DeWine came out and announced this project and what they were going to do to the local economy. One Columbus was actually over in Italy, and they even had a celebratory dinner with the company when, the day they purchased the building. Well, a week later, they contacted One Columbus and told them that they have decided to stop proceeding due to internal review and assessment. So, I have reached out to the company and I have not received a response back. And it was the people I was in contact with about different things. So, One Columbus has told me that they are now, the company is now looking to sell the seventeen and a half million dollar building. So, we do hope for the best and that we can bring in a new company that'll bring jobs and tax revenue to the city. But with this loss of, you know, they were going to bring in over 200 employees and have 200 jobs. And, you know, our tax collection, as we talked about in finance, is currently down right now. We need to make sure that we're making the right decisions when it comes to our budget. So, that's a big chunk. When we lose Intelligrated and then we think that we make it up and then they back out and things happen and it was out of our control. But we'll continue to work with One Columbus and David Kell and their realtors to try to get a good fit and, you know, hopefully not turn into a storage facility or, you know, something that we can bring some jobs in because it is a very large building and we could really use the taxes from that. So, on to some better news. I have spoken to representatives from Starbucks and the Aldi projects, and they're both telling me that they're looking to hopefully break ground by the end of the month. So, that's good news. We continue to work on our comprehensive plan and there'll be an open house for the comp plan on Wednesday, April 9th, from 5:30 to 7:00. So, we'd like to invite the community to come out and participate in that open house. I had the honor of making a special guest appearance in the London High School's musical performance of Nine to Five. I played a dead man for about three seconds in the musical, and I will just say I killed it. But seriously, the performance by these young adults was amazing. I don't know if anybody got to go see it, but it was truly amazing. The ladies who were the main characters, just unbelievable. They were, I mean, everybody was unbelievable. They all did a great job, but the show was amazing. There's a lot of events coming up in April, and it's a very busy month. April 12th has a lot of Easter egg hunts for the kids around town. You can find events being promoted on Facebook. I believe I've seen about four happening in town just on the 12th. Our adult Easter egg hunt, Hoppy Hour, will be on Friday, April 18th at 6:00. So, this is going to be a fun event for adults to reclaim their youth with an Easter egg hunt, enjoy some music, play games, have dinner from a food truck. And our hope is that this will really help the local economy too, right? So, maybe be a date night or where friends go out and maybe go get dinner beforehand and come out and do that, or come down and have the food trucks and then go out, maybe have a drink somewhere. So, you know, that's our hope. The Safety Services versus the Madison County Tigers volleyball game will be held on Thursday, the 17th at 6:00 at the high school. Junior Achievement is having their wine and women event here at City Hall on April 24th. And then the city will be hosting the COSI STEAM event here on May 2nd. And finally, London City Schools will be having their STEAM event this Saturday, the 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:15. So, there's a lot of great things going on around town. Just wanted to kind of highlight a few of them. I know there's many other things, but that's kind of the stuff that I saw. Now, on to the molo fun fact, which is the number two. That is, the number of wins the City of London had in the LHS FFA Donkey Basketball Tournament? Yeah, Lisa was there. On the hardwood, under the lights, myself, along with Chief Nickel, Sergeant Cooper, and Canine Officer Combs brought home the championship. Our first game against Cypress Church was a barn burner with the score being two to zero, with a lone bucket coming from Sergeant Cooper. In the championship game against the LHS FFA students, the City of London scoring drought was no more putting up 11 points to their two points. Chief Nickel was hot from the three-point land while Officer Combs ended his shutout with a pivotal bucket to put us ahead. Then the scoring continued with everyone getting into the action, bringing the championship here to London City Hall and to the LPD. So, I want to thank everyone. I really do want to thank all the volunteers and the organizers, everyone who came out. It was a very fun event. You know, FFA is an integral part of our community, as you guys know, and I'm glad that we were able to go out and hang out with them and support them and be part of this great event. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
You guys have anything down there?
Okay, on to old business. Up for a ninth reading, ordinance 207-24. Get motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance creating 19 incentive districts and declaring improvements to certain real property within the incentive districts to be public purpose and exempt from real property taxation. Identifying certain public infrastructure improvements that's once made will benefit or serve the parcels in the incentive districts. Requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an incentive district, public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, authorizing payments to London State School District and tools career technical centers, and approving and authorizing the execution delivery of a tax increment financing agreement with Tomcat LLC.
Given that there's been extensive discussion about these provisions already, at this point, I am going to move to adopt.
Second.
We need to amend.
Oh, move to amend, that's right. Do we have them passed out? Is it the same ones?
Yeah, can you withdraw your motion?
Oh, I'll withdraw my motion to adopt and move to modify attachment number... Jennifer, you got it handy? Okay, so we need to switch out the current tax incentive financing agreement, which is attached as an exhibit to Resolution 20724. With the hard document that you have in front of you, this is, the hard document you have in front of you has been subject to a lot of back and forth thing and it represents, I think, the best deal for the developer as well as for the city. And so, move to amend specifically as to the financing agreement as to pertains to Resolution 207.24.
I'll second that.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
So, what our council wishes then?
As amended, I would move to adopt 20724.
Second.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Ms. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 207-24 has passed. Onto ordinance 209-24. Get motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 20924, declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of London, Madison County, Ohio, to be a public purpose pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Sections 5709.41. Declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating improvements that once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose. Requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing TIF agreement and providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Sections 5709.41, .42, .43, .832, and 8.85.
So, this is the commercial TIF portion. This one is not ready. There are some documents that were still under development with the school board. School board has to have a meeting in order to approve said document. Needs to be adopted into that particular TIF agreement. Hopefully, all of those things will occur before... Hopefully, all of those things will occur before next council session. So we need to leave this one on for the moment.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, on to third reading, ordinance 119-25, got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 11925 and ordinance amending 881 of the codified ordinances.
Yeah, this will allow a .25% income tax credit out of the half a percent of us taking away in August of 2020. And it'd definitely be a help to people who have to work outside of the city, more wear and tear on their vehicles and more gas and more time away from their families. So I'd like to move to adopt.
So we had, we have a discussion on this before we adopt. So we did amend this last time. I'm not sure, were you aware of the amendment? So we're not actually going to, it was only going to be 881.08, not the .12C, is that correct?
Correct, it should be 881.08.
Which specifically is, we'll change what, please?
It just changed the positioning in the tax.
It's just, it's a different section number. It plugs it in under the section that is specific for taxes paid to other municipalities. So the correct section that it should be under is the 881, pull it up here. 88108 is where it should be. I, I believe that was amended in the last council session, is that correct?
It was. I just want to verify that that's, that's happened because we still have the document attached that had the wrong section.
Oh, okay. That, that was done, and I will make sure that that is correct as, as it's put forward tomorrow. I, I don't know if Janelle had sent that to Matt or not, but I'll double check and make sure that it does get sent to you.
Let's look at this, yeah.
Okay. Oh, he does have the corrected.
I don't know if I do. I don't think so.
Okay.
What kind of revenue, what's, what's it going to look like revenue wise that we may lose if we pass this?
That question was asked to Amy at our last Finance Committee meeting, I believe. Let me see if I have notes on that.
That was asked when it was a half percent.
Yeah.
I don't know that it was answered when that was lowered to a quarter of a percent.
There was a discussion on that point. Let's see. The city operates on the 1%. The other .5% goes solely to the fire department. So I'm not sure if this .25 credit would come out of the 1% or out of the .5% that goes solely to the fire department.
It's the 1%.
It's the 1%.
Yes, it would come out of the 1%. So down here where it says, it refers to section, it would be, it would be levied against section 881012C. That is the 1% income tax, and it specifically states it shall not apply to income tax levied by section 881012D, and that is the fire department section. So it does specifically state it would go against the general tax.
Our city auditor pointed out that the general fund was already down $2 million from last year. Of the new housing developments that are anticipated, not sure how many of these folks would in fact be working out of town. There was, I think, a general census that it was, our, our tax revenues, I think, are uncertain right now, especially with the loss of the Honeywell and then its hopeful replacement.
Any other discussion on this?
I don't believe we were down $2 million.
I'm just reading from my notes. If I had a fat finger, I apologize.
Through February, the general fund was down 800, or pardon me, not eight. We were down $88,932 through February. I don't have the March report in front of me, but I'm sure I'll be able to look it up if we need to. But it wasn't, it wasn't $2 million, I don't believe.
Jenna, do you remember?
I believe it was, and I, I just don't have that report in front of me.
was $3,767,123. This year is 1.6. So yes, we were down $2 million as reported.
So that, yes. So that income that, that we would lose, I mean, that would definitely hurt us as a city.
Yeah, it hurt us.
Anything else? What are council's wishes?
Moved to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
No.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
No.
Ms. Jackman?
No.
Okay. Ordinance 119-25 has failed. On to Resolution 126-25, got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 12625, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids for four pickleball courts.
Since Andrew's not here, if this is just for Rex to submit for bids for those pickleball courts, let's just basically get pricing and see if that's something we'll do. Any other discussion? What are council's wishes? Keep it on, or if we keep it on, we're going to lose that one?
It's the third reading I move that we adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Reed's?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 126-24 has passed. Up for a second reading, Resolution 128-25, got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 12825, a resolution authorizing the advertisement for bids for personal property no longer needed for city purposes.
Yeah, I think this was to sell an old Durapatch and a lawnmower for the city that they don't use anymore.
What was the first equipment?
The old Durapatcher and a riding mower.
We, we purchased a new Durapatcher.
Mm-hmm.
Once again, no, this is second reading, I'm sorry. I don't see any need to, to continue this on. I think we should be able to do the bids. I move that we suspend the rules.
I'll second it.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Reed's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
We can't.
Second.
It's left on.
Left on. Okay, on to Resolution 130-25, got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 13025, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids for trash hauling services.
Am I supposed to say something? That's just it. To get bids, sorry. Second meeting to get bids to contract for a hauler to haul the trash away from the dump.
This is a, something that comes up every other year, is that correct?
I think every three or every two, every two years.
Every few years.
Okay.
So I think we still have time for this. Yep.
When's our current contract up, Rex? August?
Okay, on to ordinance 131-25, got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 13125 and ordinance amending section 209 of the codified ordinances.
This is for the ready, the readying of public records and the prices of it.
Mostly has to do with the preparing video records, not to exceed $75 per hour and not to exceed $750 total per video requested. This aligns with what the state's now doing.
Any other discussion? Okay. On to ordinance 132-25, got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 13225 and ordinance amending section 1446 of the codified ordinances.
Yeah, this is to raise the fees for the contractors to work inside of London from 25 to 100, just in time for the start of the new police building. The city's broke, obviously, so they'll need it.
Yeah, too bad this just goes to board zoning. I think there's an amendment?
There, there is. I'll discuss it. So at the last meeting, we discussed some points about, I personally thought there could be different language in here that would address the lower limits of liability that the city requested, and also cleaning up the language a little bit, and then also I thought there should be a bond. I sent all of this information with my suggestions to the law director and suggested that she reach out to the city's insurance carrier to see what their suggestion was. There is an attachment, a revised attachment that, that has that language in there. I would like to ask the law director if she'll address this with council.
Yeah, so I got with Jenna to normally announce the insurance charges. We said, oh, we're being proposed legislation, asked what they had thought would, what they would recommend for the insurance rates and the bond. They actually had recommended a little bit more than what Greg initially recommended. So we updated with what our insurance company felt like was the appropriate amount of insurance we should require our contractors to have and the bond amount. So those are the changes that were emailed around with the agenda.
Right, so a certificate of liability insurance in the amount of not less than 500,000 per occurrence and a million in the aggregate for all losses to persons or properties by reason of any negligence on the part of the contractor or the contractor's agents or employees. So before, we only had 100,000 per, it said per parent, per person and 300 per occurrence. There's a little bit difference in the language because it's commercial insurance that we're looking at. My suggestion was less than this. I thought we should go at least 300,000 per occurrence, 600,000 in the aggregate. However, you know, the cities insure or thought that this should be raised. That's why that language is in there. And we had no provisions for a bond to be issued in the favor of the City of London in case somebody doesn't complete the work. We didn't have that before. That's being added. I know, I know President Peters said that he had been to Grove City and, and they had different amounts. No, this is their suggestion, whether or not we want to amend this to a lower amount or leave it as it is, is going to be up to council at this point, but that is the language that's in here.
Yeah, that, that $10,000 amount is sufficient.
So I, I move that we amend, or that we replace the document that was initially in there with the amended document that was supplied to each one of us. It has the corrected language on that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. Reed's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
I think we'll just leave that on for the third meeting?
I, I think we can leave that on in case any contractors want to come address this at the next council meeting.
Okay. On to Resolution 134-25, got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 13425, determining that the establishment of the London Gateway New Community Authority will be conducive to the public safety, convenience, and welfare and is intended to result in the development of new community and declaring the new community authority to be organized in a body political and corporate and defining the boundary of the new community district.
So this is, as it sounds like, the new community authority legislation called the London Gateway New Community Authority. It is encompassing all of the land as part of the residential TIF development recently passed, as well as the commercial side on the other side of 1.2. It operates in a very similar fashion to the TIF whereby the new community authority will have service payments and move taxes to generate monies into a fund, also to pay for community development projects. This, I don't believe, we, we still have to fill our board seats before this one will be ripe for passage.
Now, I did notice another community had just passed similar language, and they let council have, I think, 45 days, up to 45 days afterwards to name their board members. So it gave them a little time.
Okay, maybe we could have a little time. It's still only on for second reading.
And there's still some language maybe that needs to be cleaned up. I would suggest we leave this on. There was still a little bit of information that maybe needs to be cleaned up.
Okay. On to roundtable. Greg?
Well, as a Lions Club member, we had a guest speaker the other night who everybody here knows, Ms. Brenda Russell. I thought she was going to try to make it tonight. She gave a presentation because you may be well aware that we have a London Marathon. Yeah, as we expect you to come run in the London Marathon.
Shinswinds.
You can volunteer. This is what we're asking for tonight, volunteers for the London Marathon.
London will have to run.
On April the 12th.
Thank you for coming.
So she came to ask the Lions Club if we would supply volunteers, which we did last year. They still need volunteers. The London Marathon is going to be held on Saturday, April 12th. They would like people there at 6:00 AM as they register people, get everybody lined up and ready to go. They also would accept volunteers the night before as they pre-register people the night before. But they need people to man the, the water tables, you know, handing out water to the runners, people to help at the finish line, people to help with the registration. And if you didn't know it, and I didn't know this, so I asked the question. So Merrimack Miracles partners with this, and this is their largest fundraiser. And... Miracles partners with this, and this is their largest fundraiser, and it's their objective to make Mary Mac Park a better park. Their next phase, I believe, is going to be dugouts over the ballfields, they'd like to, they've tore those down, they were in bad shape. I think that's what they discussed was going to be their next phase. They've got multiple phases that they would like to get done there. They do have some money in their coffers, but they can't do that much with the money they have. So this is their largest fundraiser. I'm asking any city council members that are available and want to get up with me, and I hate to get up that early, be there at 6:00 AM to help out, April the 12th at Mary Mac Park. Thank you.
Rick?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and I guess I'll just say it, you know, there wouldn't be a need for an income tax credit for people working out of the city if so many people didn't have to go out of the city and work, because we don't have enough high-paying jobs here. We've got plenty of the traffic congestion and the strain on our resources, but not nearly enough high-paying jobs, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Rich?
Thank you everybody for coming out tonight, and want to thank all of our city employees for jobs well done. I'd like to give this tax break, I'm thinking maybe a year from now, let the economy come back, I've got a new president, just been in office 60-some days. I think the economy is going to come back, and I think it'll roar back. And then I think maybe we could look at it, see where we're at, but I just think with the Honeywell building, that falling through and us being, well, I think, $2 million short right now, and then all the projects that we've got going on, sidewalks need repaired, there's a lot of things that we need to get done. I just don't think right at this particular time is the time to do that, but later on down the road, when we have the money, I would probably support it wholeheartedly. I want to thank, you know, I did a lot of praying last night, we had a lot of bad storms coming, and I'm sure a lot of people were praying, but I'm just going to thank God publicly for watching out for us, and I think we dodged a real bullet last night, and I just give all the glory to God and thank him for it, and that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Shannon?
Yeah, I would like to echo Rich's comments about the tax credit. I think, Brent, it's not that, I think without economy right now, it's just a little too uncertain. There's a lot of shifting sands right now, and I think the more things that we have that we can rely on, the better off we'll be, especially with lots, hopefully, of new dollars coming in, then we might be in a much better position down the road to reconsider that sort of thing. I'd just like to see those things in place before we kind of count our eggs, so that's all I got.
John?
Thank you everybody for coming out also, I felt the same way about the tax, it's just too uncertain right now, and things get a little better, it wouldn't be sped. I understand why he wants to do it, and I'd like to, but it's just too unchangeable right now. And also thanks to everybody, these one resolutions we've had for many readings are finally getting straightened out, and everybody's going to be happy, and I'll be glad to all, thank you.
All right, Lisa?
I don't have anything to add.
All right. I want to thank Eve for everything you've done with the city since you've been here. You will be sadly missed. You've really helped council out with a lot of stuff. Good luck in your future endeavors. Other than that, that's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.